6:00 PM here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to note that Mr. Tony Allen, our council member Tony Allen, will not be with us today. We want to keep him in our prayers and his family also. I'd like to call upon Pastor Mary Carden with the Brazos' Convenient Ministry Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge, led by our own council member Greg Corgan. All rise please.
Father, we thank you tonight that we live in such a beautiful city. Thank you for Granbury. Thank you for Hood County. Thank you for putting us here. And Father, we thank you tonight and ask that you bless these servants that serve our city, to bless our law enforcement and everyone that serves us tonight. Father, we pray for Tony Allen, and we just ask that you heal him, that you bless him where he is, and Lord, we lift him before you. And Father, what I want to pray tonight and thank you for is the peace that passes understanding. That, Father, when you're with us, all our decisions flow through wisdom and grace. And I just say, let your joyful grace be over each one here. Thank you for leading us. Thank you for blessing our city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one home, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Constitution. Our pledge of allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under our law, one indivisible.
Well, I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. We've got a pretty exciting night where we swear in our new council members, and we're also going to be recognizing our council member Gary Couch tonight. First of all, we'd like to go into our consent agenda, that item being considered and approving the City Council Meeting Amendments of November 6, 2018, regular meeting. Council, you've all had an opportunity to look over those amendments. Are there any changes or anything that you'd like to discuss on the minutes? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the amendments of the November 6, 2018, regular meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Next, we're going to move into our deliberation agenda, and that being, consider adopting Resolution Number 18-29 and Resolution Number 18-30, which is the canvassing, the election returns of the November 6, 2018, general election, special election, respectively, and clarifying amendments to the Home Rule Charter. We'll first go into the canvassing of the election. I don't have a hard copy here, so bear with me. I'm going to go into my computer here. Thanks. Here. Here. I've got it right here. Our first one would be the scanning of the election. We had Councilperson in place three with Bruce B. Wadley with 1,940, and Joe Davis with 815. In place five, we had Tony Hedges with 1,289, and Tony Mobley with 1,563. Bruce Wadley being the winner in place three, Tony Mobley being the winner of place five. Council, do you have any questions or concerns on the canvassing? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 1829 with the canvassing of the election.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Gary Couch and a second by Councilperson Trish Reiner. Any more discussion on the canvas? All in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution is passed. Next, we will canvass the propositions. And I'm not going to read through all the propositions, but all the propositions were passed. Does council have any question or concern on the propositions? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the canvassing of Number 1830, the canvassing election returns of the November 6 general election for the amendments to the Home Rule Charter.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Corgan. Any more discussion on those? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those propositions are also approved. Next, we're going to change up a little bit on our agenda here. We're going to move Number 3 to 4 and Number 4 to 3. We're going to, at this time, I'd like to have a special recognition and award for our outgoing member, council member Gary Couch. I'm going to step down to the podium. Because everybody knows Gary's been on here, on our team here for six years, right Gary? Two terms here. And Gary's committed himself to serve the city, and he's done a great job with it. One of the things that I like to really recognize, and I think the city recognizes, that Gary was really influential, and that was the downtown scape. You know, Gary was really, he's seen a vision there, and he was really prompted in wanting to do what we needed to do in the downtown area. And I think after it was done, everybody has applauded this, and they've looked at it, and they are accepting the fact that it's beautiful. It has made our community beautiful. And so I want to personally thank Gary for having that vision and driving that horse, you might say, and making sure that everything got done with that. But there's many, many more things that Gary has contributed to the city, because it takes a lot of your own time, and Gary was committed to doing the things in this community, even though he was still working a job. He had a job that he was doing. He had a business that he was running. But he made that commitment to the city, and I personally want to thank you for that, Gary, because that's what it's all about, having a commitment to do something like that. And he done it for two terms, and I think Gary did a great job for us. So let's all give Gary a big applaud. At this time, if I could get the council down here, we're going to go ahead and present Gary with a, I think we're going to have a clock or something here for him. And I've also, and I've also got Gary's packet up here. He was wondering where his name tag was, so we've got his name tag, we've got his picture. We've even got your mail, Gary, that you, so it's a pretty good-sized packet there, Gary. We'll go ahead and give that to you too also. But right now, we want to present you with this award, and I think Chris might have some things to say.
I just wanted to give you this clock. I appreciate your time and the best of your day. What a lot of great contributions you made. And, you know, I go back and kind of look at this personal, because after being hired here, I learned that Gary was the driving force that reached out and hired a senior government resource to the nation by serving. The result will be amazing. And so, thank you for that, Gary. Of course, I appreciate your support and love and aim. And we want to give you this clock in token of our appreciation and the amount of time that you've been with us. We're going to say.
Gary, we're going to give you a chance to speak to the public.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'm kind of finished speaking. I'm looking forward to working on the projects, but to be able to deny it, I'm not questioning on the bill. And so, I want to wish this council all the best on my program with the win of the reelection. And I want to congratulate the person in my seat, Bruce Wadley. I think my seat could have been in the hand. So I wish you the best of luck, and Trish and Gary as well, and Gary. And it's been an incredible experience. We've done a lot in the last six years, and we did have a really good together. And I also want to recognize your wires and your persons, Dr. You know, it's never only a lot, it's gone, and we've gotten off, and so I'm grateful about it. And I really miss my guy that sits next to me, Tony Allen, you know, I'm in awe of the next one. We're going to use him as our president. But it's been an incredible experience. I'm looking forward to the future of Granbury, and just wish everyone the best.
I like standing next to you. At this time in the meeting, I'm going to call upon our Judge Makin. I'm sorry, not Judge Makin, but, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But he will administer the swearing-in and the oath for our new council members and our returning council member, Tony Mobley and Bruce Wadley. Bruce? And Tony?
I'm going to raise your hand, please. I thank you, and I, it's always worth, it's always worth, to faithfully execute the duty of the Office of City Councilperson. Let's believe in our, our state of Texas. And will do, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and this state. Go ahead and be honest.
Hold on there. And at this time, we're going to go ahead and issue your certificates. I have Mr. Mobley here. Certificate three, and in the name of my authority as City Attorney, this is certified as a general election held on November 6, 2018, Tony Mobley was newly elected Councilperson in place five. That is the official name of the county. Congratulations. In the name of my authority from the City of Granbury, Texas, this is certified that at the general election held on November 6, 2018, Bruce B. Wadley, I think you called Dr. Bruce B. Wadley, Bruce B. Wadley, was newly elected Councilperson in place three. That is the official name of the county. Congratulations.
Security stuff here, isn't it? Look at this to Gary.
Well, we promised Bruce not to make you vote on anything that's life-threatening or anything like that tonight. We'll go ahead and keep it calm, but you will probably be voting on some pretty, some pretty good-sized money things, so, you know, be careful, okay? Are you with us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Welcome aboard, Bruce Wadley.
Thank you.
Our next item is, consider all matters incident related to the insurance and the sale of the City of Granbury, Texas, combination tax and surplus revenue certificate of obligation series 218A, including the adoption of ordinance number 1878 authorizing the insurance of such certificates of obligation. I'd like to call Chris. Could you give us a staff report on that, please?
You bet. At this time, I would like to call on Ava Gregory and the financial advisor, John. Let them give us a briefing. Got some really good news.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, City Attorney. I wanted to start with, of course, item five. Five and six are going hand in hand. We are to ask you to authorize the ordinance to issue two bonds. We have been reviewing these bonds since earlier this year. I included some history on your staff report. Bond, the 2018A issued through Texas Water Development Board is for the total amount of 13.8 million. This will allow us to work on water improvements for the city. Back in June 19, council authorized the application for financial assistance through Texas Water Development Board. On October 9, council adopted a resolution for the publication of the notice to let the public know that you are planning on issuing this bond. And on November 12, Texas Water Development Board approved the financial assistance for the city. Since then, we received the interest rate on these bonds, and on this particular one, the interest rate is 135 basis points lower than the market rate. I also wanted to go ahead and give you the same background on item five. That's the 2018B issued, that is for wastewater treatment improvements. Same, it's going through the Texas Water Development Board, Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The discount on that interest rate through the Texas Water Development Board is 165 basis points compared to the market. Both issues are for 30 years. And I will let, tonight, what we ask you to do is approve both of the ordinances. After our financial advisor is able to give you some more detail on the financial analysis, both of these ordinances will authorize the issuance of these two bonds. One is for 13.8 million, and the other one is 34,950,000. And at this time, I turn the floor over to John Martin. He's with Hilltop, and he's our, the city's financial advisor.
Good evening, Council. John Martin here at Hilltop Securities. Happy to be here this evening, sharing great news with you. Ava did a splendid job of explaining the process and kind of the steps. That should not, you know, be taken lightly, because I will tell you that your staff here is phenomenal, and the way that they've handled this and kept us on track. This was a very fast-moving deal. Mr. Kendall's and his firm did a phenomenal job. They're great to work with. So I really miss not having Mr. Allen here tonight, because every time we have a financing, he wants to know about my fee, and...
Can we go ahead and address that now?
Can, Mr. Mobley, and, you know, I'm happy to report that, you know, the way that these deals were, used to be pretty difficult, and they were a lot harder to do than, and took, they were painstaking. There were just a lot of, a lot of moving parts, and there was a lot of bureaucracy involved, because the way the Water Development Board used to go. They seem to sail through a lot smoother. They've got, they've re-upped their programs and the way that they staff up and so forth. And so, in our contracts, we have, we had a premium in there for Water Development Board deals, and we had an additional 10% we charged. We're waiving that, because this is, so I was hoping I'd be able to tell Mr. Allen that, that we waived that 10% premium on our fee for Water Development Board deals, because it's just not right, because it was not nearly as difficult as these used to be. And a lot of that has to do with Ava and her group, and Keith as well, and so it went very smoothly. And the Water Development Board was very responsive to everybody involved. At your place setting, there's a quick little analysis to show you, to summarize the financing. And as Ava said, there's A and B. Drinking water is A, and clean water is B. So 13.8 million on the drinking water, and almost 35 million on the clean water. And you see that the Water Board, they take an origination fee to fund their programs out of those two, to net you out 13.5 million on the drinking water, and about 34,350 or so on the clean water. And from that, you'll have some other cost of issuance that will come out for our firm and for bond council and so forth. The next page is the most important part, and this shows you your overall debt service and what you, what the payments might look like and what they will look like. These are final numbers. You can see the existing payments, and these are, this is just debt that is, this is not include, this does not include any tax-supported debt. This is just from, as it's defined in your audit, the enterprise fund, your water, sewer, and electric fund. So this just is the debt that's being paid for as a responsibility of those funds. So we have two types of debts under the existing payment. We have the revenue bonds, and there's some COs and GOs out there, and that gets you your total payments. If they're 2.9 million, they drop down to 2.4 through 37 and so forth. And then we add on these two issues here, which are significant. And then you can see the total columns there. So we'll ramp up to about 4.6 million as we start getting into this here by 2021. To give you some assurance in that we can be able to manage this debt, the next page is a pro forma. Water Development Board requires that we do this, and this shows you, and we're just using your fiscal year-end September 30, 2017, numbers. So they're a little aged, and so we're taking from there, your gross revenue and operating expenses to get to a net revenue. We're assuming no growth, that you all have no rate increases, you all don't have any other additional expenses or anything like that, not having to do anything different than you did in 2017, so a year and two years ago, almost. So after everything's said and done, you can see the balance that you'll be able to fund this. Now, I will say that thanks to the interest rate shown, I shouldn't gloss over that, the average rate on the 2018As was 2.0464%. 2.0464, can I repeat that? That's on the 13.8 million. And on the larger deal, the clean water deal, 1.7505. We've been hearing about interest rates rising so much, but we did very well at the Water Development Board. And they provided us savings to Ava and myself with an email, and they projected the savings at what, 12 million?
12.6.
12.6 million. I believe it might be, that might be a conservative number, actually, because when I looked at where rates were, when this was, when this was firmed up, I believe that with these 30-year issues, the rate would have been bumping up on 4% these days. So about 3.8, 3.9% is what I feel like, if we had done a publicly offered deal, open-market transaction. So the Water Development Board is a godsend for cities in need for these types of projects. So it worked out very well for you. So it's a lot of money, but you got a great rate on it. So anyway, back to the pro forma, it shows that everything will cash flow, and this is using 2017 numbers. And then finally, there's a detail, the cost of issuance of the various folks involved in the two deals. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, John. Council, do you have any questions for John or any comments?
I'd like a quick comment. Just to be clear, the right-hand column on the grid spreadsheet on the second page, second page of this handout, the far right-hand is combined for all of our debt. That'd be our total debt service for that fund.
Total debt service just for water and sewer?
Gotcha.
Does not include tax-supported?
Right. Just wanted to clear that up. Everybody understands that. That it's our old debt plus our new debt. That's what we'll be paying.
So your enterprise fund will be responsible for this?
Which is great. We'll be able to cash flow this without doing anything different. And it also allows for your new growth to help pay these bills.
And the larger one, John, is for 30, it's for 34 million, right?
34,950, almost 35 million, Mayor.
1.7505, okay.
And that's the one that's at 1.75%.
Very good. Great interest rates. Very. Council, any more questions, concerns for John? Thank you, John, and thank you, Ava. At this time, we looked over this. I'll entertain, we'll go to Number 5 first. We need to do these separately. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing the insurance of the combination tax and surplus revenue certificate of obligation series 2018A.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Council, any more discussion on this one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. The next one will be the 2018B. Council, do you have any more questions or concerns on this one? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance authorizing insurance of the combination tax and surplus revenue certificate of obligation series 2018B.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Mobley. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Once again, thank you, John. Thank you, Ava, for all that hard work. Our next item is to consider selecting a mayor pro temp from among the council people. At this time, I'll entertain, we're not going to make a motion at this time. We'll just entertain nominees, nominees for the position of the mayor pro temp. As you know, the mayor pro temp functions as the mayor in the absence of the mayor, and goes to a lot of meetings, too. You know, he's a pretty busy, pretty busy individual, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Reiner.
I would like to go ahead and nominate Councilman Mobley. I think he's done a fine job this year, so I think he should continue on in that capacity.
So we have a nomination of Councilman Tony Mobley. Council, any more nominations?
He's done all right.
You think he's done all right? I do, too. Done a pretty good job. Well, if no more, I'll entertain a motion to select Councilperson Tony Mobley for the mayor pro temp for the 2019.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan and a second by Councilperson Reiner. Any more discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Not even Tony Mobley said nay.
I was going to just moan, but we're good with that, David.
Tony, I think you've done a great job also, and we look forward to working with you again. So Tony Mobley will be our mayor pro temp. Our next item is determine and consider adopting the City Council rules and procedures. As you know, council, we do this at the first meeting of the, after the elections. I would recommend adopting at this time the rules and procedures as they are right now, and that way we can give our new council member an opportunity to look over these, because at a later date, we can, and I've discussed this with our attorney, but at a later date, we can bring these back up and make changes to them if we need. But we do need to adopt the rules and procedures at this meeting tonight. Council, do you have any discussion on that? If none, I'll entertain that motion to go ahead and to adopt the current rules and procedures, council rules and procedures.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corgan and a second by Councilperson Reiner. I heard you, I heard you. But he beat you. Just barely. That's the second time it's happened? I'm sorry. I am so sorry. But we have a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Our next item is a two-part item here, is to consider rescheduling the January 1, 2019, regular City Council meeting. First of all, we would need to suspend the City of Granbury City Council rules and procedures of section 1, 2.1 of the regular meeting, and then, if that, after that is done, if that is done, then we would be setting the time and date for the first meeting. So at this time, do I have a motion to... So at this time, do I have a motion to suspend the City of Grandberry City Council Rules and Procedures, Section 2.1 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
I have a motion? That was, that was,
I'll just second everything that is okay.
I'll tell you what, I'm going to give that one to, to Councilperson Reiner. And a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on that, counsel? For the new council member, what that does, that goes ahead and suspends our rules and procedures so that we can make changes and then we go back into our old rules and procedures. Any more discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. So with that said, now we will look to, to set a date, a time, a date for the first meeting in January. As you know, the January meeting, the first meeting falls on January 1. Don't know that there will be a lot of people there and present, so, uh, we have an opportunity here and when we can move to where our meetings are back-to-back Tuesdays, as long as we have the two, uh, meetings in, in the month of January. So with that said, we have some dates there. Does anybody want to, uh, to, uh, recommend a date that we would have our first meeting in January?
How about the following Tuesday, the 8th?
I have a motion, I have a recommendation for January the 8th at, 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Do we have any other nominations? Well, if none, I will entertain a motion then to change the January 1 meeting to January 8th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall for the first meeting of the month.
So moved.
Oh. We have a motion by our new council member, Bruce Wadley. Do I have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Greg Corrigan. Any more discussion on that date, counsel? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our first meeting in January will be January 8th at 6:00 PM at City Hall. Fay, would you put that out to everybody on the streets and stuff? Make sure you get that for me, okay? Thank you. I don't control the screen, I'm just reading. At this time, I'm now declared that the city council is convened into open session and that all members except for Tony Allen are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in these following sections. Section 551071, consultation with our attorney. Section 551072, deliberation regarding real property. And section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. At this time, counsel, the, uh, the council goes back into executive session. Has reconvened into open session. There's no action taken in executive session. At this time, does counsel have any more comments? If none, council meeting is adjourned.